Hello, I'm Lorette Ligan, President of the Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the Chamber membership and our Board of Directors, I want to thank you for joining us for our Forum Onslow. The Chamber works with government agencies on issues that affect our business community. We monitor legislative issues that impact local business. We promote partnerships between business, government, military, and education. And we use these forums to create awareness on topics that are important to the entire community, such as the election of those that represent us on the state and local level. We are pleased to have Duke Energy as the sponsor of the Meet the Candidates Forum. Derek Reimer is the District Manager for Duke Energy North Carolina Government and Community Relations. Now, his territory is Onslow, Jones, Pitt, Carteret, Duplin, Wayne, Lenore, Craven, Pamlico, Beaufort, and Green Counties. So, as you can imagine, he's a pretty busy man, but he did record a message for you today.
Hello, and welcome, candidates. I am Derek Reimer, your District Manager for Government and Community Relations for Duke Energy. We are proud to sponsor these candidate forums and thank the Chamber of Commerce for working hard to make sure you're given this opportunity. At Duke Energy, I'm excited about informing the community of the Carolina's Carbon Plan, which will focus on reducing our carbon emissions by 70% by 2030 and going net zero by 2050. The commitment to creating cleaner environment will include transformative and innovative strategies like renewables and grid investments. A recent example of this can be seen at the existing solar facility at Camp Lejeune, where we will soon be adding large-scale battery storage to supplement the solar facility for when the sun isn't shining. This will help with not only a cleaner energy solution, but our resiliency efforts as well. Having worked in government for a number of years, I want to express my personal thanks to you and your families for your willingness to serve. It's not an easy decision to enter into public service, but know that we thank you and have a great forum.
Thank you, Derek. Now, on to the Meet the Candidates. Our moderator today is Elliot Potter. He's a retired newspaperman who served as the editor of the Daily News for more than 30 years. He currently works as a communication consultant, including helping One Place and its child advocacy center spread the word about protecting our children. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Elliot Potter.
Thanks. It's okay. I just survived. You know, I've been doing this... Actually, we've been doing local political forums, believe it or not, more than 40 years. So, it's been a while, but I will tell you, this is a very impressive turnout. I believe we have a full slate of the Republican candidates here today. So, we really appreciate the attention that's being paid, that you've paid, and the time that you devoted to this. You know, when I woke up the day and I turned on my computer, I was greeted with a slide that was going through Holy Week. Of course, Christians celebrating a very... This is our, you know, this is our Easter week. And it was ironic, I thought, that on Tuesday, Jesus spent His last Tuesday teaching at the temple. So, today, we have the Board of Education candidates starting things off, and we certainly are glad that you're here. The format is very familiar to those that have watched, those that are in the audience, some very familiar faces, and those of you that have watched these programs before. It will consist of three parts. We'll have an opening statement. We'll have a question-and-answer period, and we'll have a closing statement. All of those will last... The candidates are given a one-minute time limit for each one of those, and we'll use a rotating order of questioning. At the end of the round of responses, of each round of responses to a question, candidates will have a chance to add a 30-second rebuttal. You have been given two rebuttal cards that you can hold up and let us know. You only have two, so you've got to use them wisely. If I somehow... I will try to... We'll try to call on you for rebuttals in the original order of questioning. That may get a little jumbled. If somehow I miss a card, please just say something. Same thing holds if I happen to... As we do use a sort of random order of questioning, there might be some rhyme or reason to it. But if I happen to miss your turn, do the same, because those kind of things have come up from time to time. Again, the candidates are asked to simply raise their card if they'd like to use one of their opportunities to further address a question. And at the end, we'll have summations. As I said to you, you have one minute for those. Maybe there's an issue we haven't discussed. It would be your chance to talk about it. One of the things I always like to say here is this is a forum, which means you talk to the audience. It's not a debate, in which you would debate each other. We ask the audience to refrain from applause during the program. We'll give everybody a chance for a round of applause at the end. Of course, that is providing that you adhere to our time limits. But we're going to try to keep this to about an hour today. We do have a lighting system that we use to let you know where you stand. You'll see a yellow light. You have about 30 seconds, I believe that's correct, in which you will be able to enter your response, except for 15 seconds during the rebuttal. When you see a red light and you hear a buzzer, or some sort of tone, that means your time is up. And I ask you to complete your sentence, not necessarily your thought, because that could go on a little bit longer. And I would choose to... I would really hope that y'all won't make me look like one of those rude people on TV and have to cut you off, and I don't want to do that. So, we're going to go ahead and get started. We're going to do it with opening statements. And during your opening statement, we ask each candidate to state your name, provide us with a sentence or two, or some background information to introduce yourselves, including where you reside, and if applicable, your current occupation. Please give us an idea of why you are running for office. So, I'll ask the candidates, if you have any questions now, I can address them. If not, we are going to... And you know what? Those cards are kind of hard for me to read, and I'm going to have to look on... Pardon me, I'm Mr. Butler. I'm going to call on Mr. Rogers.
Last time we had this conversation, we did the same thing. Can we get started with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
If you'd like to. We can do it. Would you lead us?
Sure.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get started with Mr. Butler, and we'll move to your left.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. I'm Randall Butler. I'm a conservative Christian, been married to the same woman for 49 years this year. I have four beautiful daughters, I have 12 grandchildren, and one great-grandson. I came from a dairy farm up in New Hampshire, joined the Marine Corps in 1972, retired at first, and let me see, 1994. Then I taught Navy Junior ROTC at Northeast Guilford High School in Greensboro, North Carolina, for 13 years. I moved back down to Onslow County in 2007. I still reside out there in Nine Mile, still living there, still having family and friends and church out there. I joined the Sheriff's Office in 2009. I spent 10 years retired as a sergeant. While in the Sheriff's Office, I was a school resource officer at a high school and a middle school, and I was a supervisor for SROs for six years. And I see what goes on in our schools as a teacher and as a law enforcement officer, and I want to help.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Albert Garvey.
My name again is Albert Garvey. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I've been married for 36 years to my wife, Polly. I have a son, Zachary, a daughter-in-law, Morgan. I graduated from Southwest High School. I also reside in the Southwest area. I retired from the Onslow County Schools after 30 years. I began my career as a high school teacher and a coach. I ended my career as a high school principal at Northwoods Elementary. And for 30 years, I've advocated for our students, and after a lot of prayer, I felt like this was a good opportunity to come back and advocate for our students again.
Mr. Bill Lanier.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. I'm Bill Lanier. I'm incumbent. I currently hold a seat on Onslow County's Board of Education. The knowledge and insight to assess, accommodate, and resolve concerns in a classroom as well as navigate the function of a large and diverse school system is a paramount issue at hand. My history of 20 years in the United States Marine Corps, Transportation Logistics Chief, trainer, and former school instructor. I've served as behavioral health care, paraprofessional, and special needs teacher assistant within Onslow County Schools. Along with my experience as administrator and treasurer of a church, I worked in retail jewelry sales, and all of this representation has actually given me a broad knowledge of administrative process and the ability to communicate well. Serving on the board, I've learned quite a few things. So, I'm looking for everybody's support and vote.
Thank you. And Mr. Sean Potvin.
Thank you. How's everything going? I'm Sean Potvin, Board of Education, running for the Board of Education. I moved to the area in 2013, got stationed here with the Marine Corps, and which I've just completed 22 years in the Marine Corps this past, in October of 2020. Upon retirement, I came on staff with the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and I spent every day in the schools, quickly got promoted to area director, so I was in charge of Onslow, Jones, Duplin, and Sampson Counties. It was great, amazing, but up until last week, I decided to step back from FCA. I felt as if I was giving a little bit of me to a lot of people. And in the ministry world, I wanted to give all of me to my community. So, I stepped away from FCA as an employee, and now I'm going to just be a volunteer in Onslow County. I've been married for 21 years, have three children, all of which graduated Onslow County, and my daughter-in-law is currently a substitute teacher at Jacksonville High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we go to Mr. Lewis Rogers.
Hello. Name's Lewis Rogers. I'm a prior service veteran, served with the 82nd Airborne as an infantry paratrooper. I'm actually from California, been married to my wife for 16 years. I have four children, three girls, three girls, and one boy. After getting out of the military, my family and I decided to come back here. We've seen a lot of the craziness out there in the schools and also in the legal system, and we decided to get out of there as quickly as we could. I decided to run for school board because what we saw in California happening is something that we can't allow to happen here, whether it be at a state or local level. I just like to see people getting involved, and I'd like to be one of them, and I believe it starts at the school. I've been engaging in community events as far as opening up a ministry, interdiction with sex trafficking and human trafficking, as well as Friends of North Carolina State Parks. All we want to do is get involved and stop this nonsense, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you. And now we'll move to AG Todd.
My name is AG Todd, and I'm running for Onslow County Board of Education. I currently reside in the Hubert area, and I am a licensed real estate agent. I'm originally from Ohio. I have been married to my husband for 16 years. We share four children and three grandchildren. However, for the last year, my focus has been fighting for the rights of parents and or guardians of the children in our school system. And I'm running for the position because I want to be the voice of parents throughout the county. Thank you.
And Bradley Williams.
Hello. My name is Bradley Williams. I'm running for Onslow County Board of Education. I'm simply running out of obedience to God. I'm convinced that it's time for average, everyday American patriots to stand up and be involved in our communities. You've seen the stuff that's going on across the nation. It's obviously disturbing, and it's time to do something about it before it gets out of the ability for us to control it. I've been married for 22 years to my beautiful wife, Ashley. I have two girls, one's a 17-year-old at Dixon High, one's a nine-year-old fourth grader at Coastal Elementary. I've lived in Sneazeford for the past 10 years, retired, and I currently run heavy equipment during the day, and I serve as an associate pastor of North Topseal Shores Baptist Church.
Thank you. And finally, Diane R. LeBlanc. Are you going to tell us what the R. stands for?
It stands for Renee. Hello, my name is Diane LeBlanc, and I am running for Onslow County Board of Education. I'm originally from the east side of Cleveland, so I like to tell people that I'm a Yankee by birth, but I'm certainly Southern by the grace of God. I have been married to my husband, Jeffrey, for 41 years. We have three children and seven grandchildren. We have lived in Onslow County for 30 years. We moved 22 times in 26 years, compliments of the Marine Corps and your tax dollars. We currently reside in Rain Tree. I am a 25-year experienced educator. I have worked with children from pre-K to high school. I currently work for Coastal Carolina Community College, where I am the WIWA Business Services Specialist. My job is to connect students and adults with businesses here in Onslow County and to help them successfully navigate the workforce. Thank you.
All right. So, for the first question, Mr. LeBlanc, we'll start with you, and we'll work our way back down the table. You folks have been campaigning for a few weeks now. Please tell us what you're hearing from people about what they expect from a school board member, and what is the issue that you're hearing most about from the public?
So, thank you for that question, Mr. Potter. I have talked to a lot of people. I'm on several neighborhood websites. There are two specific issues that I'm hearing about. The number-one issue for students is bullying in the Onslow County school system, where children go to school not to learn, but a lot of them are going to school to survive. And I just feel that that's really sad. The issue that I'm hearing from parents is that the administration doesn't fully respond to requests that they present and issues that are raised by parents. The third thing would be teachers and faculty and staff, and I think that the overwhelming responsibility that they have right now, especially post-COVID, so those are the issues that I'm hearing.
Okay, Mr. Williams.
Sir, you said a few weeks. This has been a few months, and it's exhausting. Essentially, the biggest thing I've heard, and it's been from both students, teachers, and parents, is that they don't feel heard and they don't feel valued. Whether that is a reality or not, it is something that drastically needs to change. If you're worried about teacher shortages or what, and they don't feel valued, they don't feel heard, they don't feel listened to or responded to, that problem's going to continue no matter what we do. But essentially, we've grown to see the public education system as something of a government-run institution when it should be more of a community resource where we're all in it together. And until we get to that point, we're going to have the same challenges.
Okay. And the question on the table is, I'm asking what people are telling you on the campaign trail about what they expect from a school board member, and what is the issue that you're hearing most about from the public? And we'll move to Ms. Todd.
Thank you for that question. As I've been out and about, probably the three things that I've been hearing the most about is just parents feeling like their rights are not being respected as far as medical decisions that they would like to make, whether it's masks or in the school. I guess that's probably been the most primary one we've had so far this year. Secondly, as curriculum, there's a big concern in what's actually being taught in our school and what isn't being taught and what should be. I know there's a lot of reservations that a lot of people believe that a lot of it's going on in the bigger counties, but it is state mandated, the social-emotional learning and all 12 of our academic standards. So, there's not really any way for Onslow County to get around it, and I'm not giving anybody to take their opinion on it, but they need to do their research and make their own opinions on that. The third thing, I would believe, is the teachers feel overworked and underappreciated, and I hear that... My understanding is that there's... They just need to be listened to, heard more. Sorry, thank you.
Mr. Rogers.
One of the things I didn't mention is that I'm a licensed clinical therapist or clinical social worker, and the job that we have is to identify an issue or a challenge and then determine the best, most feasible way to resolve that challenge. And obviously, that's what we do as school board members, or that's what the position of being a school board member is, essentially being an advocate. And when we... When I talk to a lot of the parents and/or teachers, there's a commonality, and the commonality is that voices, they're not being heard. Regardless of whether or not that's true, if somebody believes that, if a teacher or a parent believes that they're not being heard, it is the job of the school board to rectify that issue. How do they rectify it? They have to step out of the comfort zone and then figure out how to utilize the resources in the best of their ability to rectify that issue. So, if they have X amount of dollars, whether it be for advertising, or just getting a word out or a message out, it needs to be utilized. And unfortunately, we believe that they're not using it to the best of their ability.
Mr. Potter.
Yes, you gave me one minute, and I talk a lot by nature, so I'm going to try to nail all the things that I've heard. I think the number-one thing that I've heard is transparency. Parents want transparency from the board, they want transparency from the individual schools, and they want their rights. They want the right to exempt their child from specific education, some courses going on, but how can they exempt their child from graphic sexual education if they don't know about it? So, they want transparency. Another thing that I've encountered from actual students is they want, and believe it or not, they want accountability of other students that are causing a distraction in a class. If there's a student that's doing things that they shouldn't be doing, a lot of times it's... With the influx of growth and everything in our students, the teacher just keeps pushing through, and that student gets pushed along the way, but it's a distraction to the other students that are really putting forth the effort. So, the students want accountability, and really, the teachers are saying that there's not enough family involvement with the students.
Okay, Mr. Lanier, the question on the table is what are folks telling you about what they expect from a school board member, and what is the issue that you're hearing most about from the public?
As a school board member, folks are not telling me very much. I hear a lot of things going on out in the community as far as the wants and desires, and even the political and ideological leanings of people. But here's the point. The most important responsibility of a school board member is ensuring that policy, process, and practice of the school system not only meets the needs of the stakeholders, but meets the specific needs of the individual child and family. All this is done through law, through policy, through process, specific practice, and then participation. The best point of participation is so that parents can be heard. It doesn't start at the top of the administration, it starts at the bottom, at the school level. And policy provides that all parents have access, not only to address their issues, but also for participation.
Mr. Garvey.
What I'm hearing from people are they want our board members to be a good facilitator between the community and the board and the school system itself. And probably one of the big issues that I'm hearing, they kind of go hand in hand, and that's, number one, is the learning gap of our students, because since Hurricane Florence three years ago, we've had two years of COVID, we've had three years of uninterrupted learning for our students. So, combine that with a teacher shortage. We're looking to be competitive with other counties to get good, quality teachers in, because the only way to close that gap is to make sure that we hire good, quality teachers in the classroom. And that's... And one of the main ways to do that is to advocate for our county, make sure we got a good competitive local supplement, make sure that teachers out there understand that we have a good support system in place to support new teachers, and make sure they understand that Onslow County is well ahead of the rest of the state when it comes to technology use among staff and students.
Okay.
A lot of people I talk to are concerned about safety. In fact, one woman told me she took her child out of the school because she didn't feel he was safe in the school. Too many fights, drugs going out. Some laws have changed recently that has changed the school resource officer's ability to put handcuffs on a kid and take him to jail. You've got to be 18 or older. And a lot of parents, they see that, and they say, "There's a problem going on in our schools." Also, a lot of them are saying that they're not hearing what's going on in the school. The middle school and elementary school, they hear quite a bit, but the high schoolers, they're not turning papers in, parents ain't seeing them to sign them, so they're kind of concerned about what's going on. Also, yesterday, I was talking to a woman, and she said that... I never heard this before, but she had a form that their child had filled out, and it asked, "What pronoun do you prefer to be called by?" You know, gender-wise. And her mom went with that. "You've got to be kidding me. Like, I have a choice? You're a male or a female?" So, there's a lot of things like that going out there.
Okay.
30 seconds, right? 30 seconds?
30 seconds.
All right, I spoke about what I've heard on the campaign trail. I am a parent of an Onslow County school child. My daughter's a senior at Swansboro High School. And something that I've noticed, especially working with Fellowship of Christian Athletes, is a lot of the students are alone. After school hours, they're alone. And I think to mitigate this, we need to have more community involvement at our school functions. A child should not have to pay $7 to go to a school sporting event. If they're at the event for free, if the parents are there with the community, then they can actually watch and help give that love to that student.
Well, thank you very much. We're going to start this round with Mr. Rogers, move down the table this way, and then back around this way. You know, I almost asked the exact same question a couple of years ago, but here we go again. Onslow County has dealt with COVID for more than two years now, and the situation has been acutely difficult for the school system. What lessons can we draw from this experience moving forward?
Well, I'll give credit where credit is due. Onslow County has adapted very well to COVID, not just the school, but the county itself. However, a lot of the challenges that we see are gaps in security. As we adapt, we put kids in front of computers. We do create programs to create a safe environment for those children, however, there's still significant gaps in that. A really quick story of mine was my daughter was able to open up a social media account with her school email and her computer at my house. For some, they might say that, "Well, we're closing the gap slowly but surely, but how quick can somebody else get inside that gap?" I think it's significantly a danger. As we grow so fast, as we adapt so fast, we are leaving such big loopholes open that submit our children to a lot of these dangers. So, one of the lessons that we have to learn in looking out of the counties is, yeah, policy is there for a reason, however, sometimes policy needs to be... It needs to be changed.
Mr. Todd.
Thank you. As a parent, I feel like that we need to step up and get more involved in what's going on with our children in school. I feel like... I feel like I just, when it came down to it, and I really stopped and started researching what was going on in the schools and the policies and procedures or laws that have been put into place that have taken away the right for me to decide whether my child wears a mask, or maybe gets a vaccine, or the curriculum that's being taught. And I put too much trust in that system, that they were doing what they were supposed to be doing. And I honestly can stand up here and say, "I do not believe that's what was going on." I think as parents, we need to be more involved in our legislatures and our Board of... Anybody that's elected, we need to be more involved in understanding what's really going on around us. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Williams, the question before the panel is, what are the lessons that we've learned after two years plus of COVID experience in the local school system?
Well, I hope we're still learning lessons, because I wish what we would have talked about was when we decided to put masks on people for so long, what was the social, emotional, and health detriment that it caused to kids and adults. I wish what we had done is relied on people to make decisions for themselves instead of forcing things upon it. And I wish what we had done is not considered mandates, laws, without legislation. I'm done.
Thank you. The COVID season was absolutely an acutely difficult season. I do want to thank the school board for navigating the minefield, because that's really what it was. I think that one of the things that we've learned, and I'm really hoping parents have learned that as well as us as a community, is that we have to take everybody's situation into consideration. There are people who, because their students weren't in school, felt like they weren't living into the constitutional right to get the education, but at the same time, we have to think about individuals who maybe couldn't wear masks, students that couldn't wear masks for health reasons. And so, finding that balance is really difficult. I would say that as a school board member, I think it would be really important to... I would say that, um, as a school board member, um, I think it would be really important to, to just talk to the community and say, what could we have done better?
Thank you. And, uh, we will now move to, uh, Mr. Butler.
I know in the, in the military and also in the, uh, sheriff's office, we have a thing that's called, uh, after action reports. You look back to see what you did and see how you could improve it. We need to do that. Look back and see what we did and see how we can prove it if it should ever come again. Number one, of course, is the masks. The mask was a big deal. Hindsight now, we, we learned that, uh, unless you have that special mask, they don't do any good at all. But yet we force people to wear them. Okay, lesson learned. These computers at home, not every child has a computer. We assume that everybody's got access to a computer. Some do not. Some do not have, have the internet. My daughter, thank God, she, she was able to finally get it, but it took a long time to get it that way. And they also learned what was being taught. That's a good thing. What was being taught in the schools is that they didn't realize what was being taught. Because now it's right in front of them, they can see it. So I, I think a lot of things we look back and do that after action and say, look, let's not do it like we did before. Let's fix it and do it right next time. And that's what we need to do.
Okay, Mr. Garby.
The pandemic, it was, it was a bad time, no doubt. And one thing that I realized is that, that God works in mysterious ways. And one of the blessings that came out of that was through virtual learning, parents were able to monitor what was going on in their students' learning. I don't think we did our students any favor by keeping them isolated and at home. I think isolation probably did more damage than wearing the masks. Technology is a wonderful thing. There's no doubt. And it is a tool that needs to be used. It's not a substitute for teaching. And I think one of the things that we definitely learned is that there is no substitute for face-to-face learning. And throughout this whole pandemic, they kept saying time and time again that our students and our children were the least at risk. And there was no, no reason why they shouldn't have been in school throughout this.
Mr. Lanier?
Well, like I said, when I ran the last time, um, the school environment has to be unencumbered by social issues and students need to have a desire to learn the subject matter in order to use it later in life. The pandemic and even pre-pandemic through, um, Hurricane Florence, we learned that there are certain things we have to think about concerning education. We have to be more flexible. We have to take into consideration even now that those things diminish learning time and then we have to play catch up. The main focus is to stay focused on curriculum and learning. As far as those other issues concerned, we want a system that's transparent, fiscally responsible, and we want an environment that accommodates, um, academic professionalism. And parental, uh, participation is an important part of that as well.
All right, Mr. Park.
Yes, I think, first of all, this community is resilient. It's right before COVID, it was Hurricane Florence. So we've, we've been learning as we've moved. I think one of the biggest things that we could take away from this is our teachers, our educators need to have the knowledge in technology. It's once all of a sudden you have a teacher that's been educating for 20-plus years and then they're thrown into this online virtual environment, they necessarily don't know Microsoft Teams, things like that. But they're expected to still educate our children while they're getting educated and they're confused and lost. I also think that, that we need to be able to adapt on the fly. It's, things are going to happen. It doesn't matter whether it be a pandemic, a national disaster, whatever it is, we need to be able to adapt on the fly. And I think we have a lot of lessons that we've learned, um, throughout the pandemic. But we have to be able to continuously be out there and, um, we, we can't cave to outside influence, whether it be the masks. We have to stick with our guns and we can't be scared to make a call.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Rogers, you have a rebuttal.
Yeah. I, I like hearing, uh, how we have to adapt as school board members. The one, the biggest thing that we learned as, uh, as school board is that, um, it doesn't matter, uh, what the national emergency is. If there's an implementation, if there's legislation, legislation that dictates whether or not we take away a human right from a child or a parent, um, I don't care what's in the policy. That's where we actually adapt to moving away from that policy. Six school boards in, um, North Carolina actually went against state legislation. And guess what? Their schools stayed open. Why didn't we? We actually ended up putting masks on our kids just to stay open.
Okay, thank you very much. Any more? Uh, I say this rebuttal, two more active half rebuttals, I could just speak further comments on what you already said. Mr. Lanier?
Well, listening to it, it, and, and being on the board, sometimes it might sound like an indictment of the current board, the administration and the district itself. The bottom line is regardless of which of the candidates, even myself, end up on the Onslow County Board of Education, law, policy, process and practice is going to determine what we can do and how we can do it. We can be flexible, but things take time. It's important that every stakeholder out there know that things take time.
I think, I, I don't think we can be scared to, to make that call. I know that there's emails out there, they've, they've been floating around. We started school no masks and then highly influential individual on base had reached out to the school board, not public forum like every other citizen of Onslow County has to do. But they reached out to the school board and highly encouraged them to put masks back on because our nation's defense, it just fell on the shoulders of our children. And then somehow we put masks back on. So I think we, if we're gonna have a board of education, they need, need to be able to stand their ground and stand behind the decisions that they make.
All right, uh, we're gonna start with you this time, Mr. Park, and move back down the table and then back around again. Okay, uh, like nearly all school systems in North Carolina, Onslow County faces a potential shortage of teachers, particularly in the areas of math and special education. What are some ways we can address this issue for us?
Well, I think first of all, uh, we need to have the community step in. So there is also a shortage of, uh, substitute teachers where they're taking one teacher during their planning period and then now they have to cover another teacher's classroom as a substitute. Thus, they can't plan for their follow-on periods. I've stepped in, I heard that there was a shortage of substitute teachers. I've stepped in, I've gone through the, the mandatory 24-hour training for substitute teachers. This is Onslow County. Like a large part of our county has retired military. Just because somebody's time in service stops, it doesn't mean their time serving stops. So I think that what we need to do is get the community involved and volunteer to come in as a substitute teacher. And with 15 seconds left, we need to create a, an attractive education system where outside teachers want to come to Onslow County and be employed. If we're just, just like everybody else, then why would they choose Onslow County?
But Mr. Lanier, actually it's your turn to answer the question, so you don't have to use your rebuttal card.
Thank you. The issue of recruiting and retention revolves around managing several things. One concerning teachers is the environment and safety, the workload that's on the teachers and the professional expectations of, uh, their actually delivering service to the students. When, when you look at that against other districts, competing fields, you get a situation where it's not always possible to draw in the people that you need. We have to be more creative about it. We have to offer more incentives. We have to, uh, offer greater pay. We have to improve the work environment. These are the things that have to be taken into consideration. And what was said is, is primarily true. But again, there are many moving pieces to this puzzle that prevent us from doing precisely what everyone would like at any given time.
Mr. Garby?
One of the things that we need to continue to do is make sure that Onslow County has a competitive local supplement, which we do. I think, I know at least east of 95, I think Onslow County has probably one of the highest local supplements that we use to attract and, and retain teachers. Uh, when I hired teachers as a principal, one of the things I told them was that this is a tough job and doing it by yourself will quickly get you overwhelmed. And providing that support system to our teachers, especially our new teachers, through mentors and beginning teacher meetings is important. But also letting teachers around the state know that we have a support system that includes instructional coaches, technology facilitators. All these people are here to help teachers be successful in the classroom. Uh, again, promoting the technology use, the, the fact that we are, like I said, well ahead of the rest of the state with technology. And one of the other things that we continue to need to contrite, to continue to do is to tap into our teacher assistants that already have their associate's degree and provide financial support for them to move forward to become teachers. Matter of fact, Onslow County is moving forward with, uh, future teachers of Onslow, where we're actually going into the school system.
I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Butler.
Yes, sir. Well, as a teacher myself, I, I know that the support that you get is more important than, the, the money's good, don't get me wrong, you need the money. But the support you feel you're getting, uh, from your, uh, the staff is what really makes you want to stay. Uh, if you turn a, a child in that's been in trouble and they get sent right back to your, your classroom and saying, well, sorry, we can't do nothing about it. It says only, it's the first time, he says, stay right here. That's pretty frustrating for a teacher when he's trying to teach and this, this child is constantly disrupting and he can't do anything about it. Uh, you can pay him all you want to, but eventually it's going to get to the point where he's, I, I'm not dealing with this anymore. Uh, we've had instances where, where teachers are assaulted by kids. Well, it's his first time, we can't do nothing about it. That needs to change. We need to actually show the kids, I mean, the teachers, we support them in what they do. Now, substitute teaching is a good idea, but normally a substitute teacher sits there and they're like a babysitter until the actual teacher gets back. They're the ones, the teacher are the ones that do the lessons. So it's, it's a Band-Aid, it's not a fix.
Okay, we, we'll get right back into, and we're gonna start with, uh, I believe, uh, Ms. LeBlanc next and we'll come back down and then we'll get to rebuttal parts.
Having worked as a teacher in the public school system, this is one thing I know, that teaching is not a job, it's a calling. You have to bring a passion to that position. You have to bring a passion for students to help them learn, to achieve and be, um, who they have the potential to be. I really believe that the key to teacher retention is a couple of things. First of all, it's supported the administration. Teachers need to know that no matter what happens, they are gonna be listened to and they're gonna be supported by their administration. The second piece of that is supported of the, by the community, namely, um, parents. We know that there's a lot of parents that just don't get involved and that certainly is a game changer. The work environment needs to be positive. And then, um, lastly, I think we need to entertain the idea of offering incentives for teachers to get like a master's degree and be able to move up in their education and support that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams.
When I retired from the Marine Corps in 2019, I didn't have ambitions for a full-time job. Um, I was serving as associate pastor, still do. But I started working for a friend of mine that runs heavy equipment and does some, some, sometimes difficult work manually. And, um, I did that to help him out for a little bit and it was supposed to be for a few weeks until he got things back on his feet. And I've been there for three straight years. We're overworked, underpaid and there's very few of us. The reason I stay there is because I feel valued, valued and appreciated. I feel respected, I feel like I'm heard. And if I speak, I know my boss listens to me and he reacts accordingly. I said to begin with that until we start treating and viewing and our county schools start functioning as a community resources but versus a public government institution, that we're always gonna face the same challenges. We can offer all the money in the world to teachers, but some of them will tell you, many of them will tell you, it's not about the money.
Thank you, Mr. Ms. Todd.
Thank you. I believe that all the teachers I've ever known, my oldest child will be 29 this month. And all the teachers that, for the most part, I've ever interacted with, they were not doing it for the benefits. They weren't doing it for the money. They were doing it because they loved to teach and they wanted to make a difference in those children's lives. I know that we need to offer incentives and what have you, but I honestly believe that in my research that I have been doing and I've been doing it for five months into some of the things that are being taught in our schools, that these teachers either are not comfortable with it or it's not something they believe in, but it's state mandated. And I think that we really need to take a look at some of those things as well as the incentives and the other things and see if they're happy teaching what they're teaching. And if they're not, then we need to get to the bottom of what we can do to make things different.
Okay, and Mr. Rogers?
Um, we could dance around this question all day. And the reality of it is, is, uh, they don't feel like they're heard. And if you've been to a school board meeting, if you've been to a recent one, it's not necessarily the school board that they're asking, the, the, the parents or teachers are talking to. It's the administrators. And you, you hear what the parents say. They say, we're not being heard, we can't even get a day off after they shut down the school because of inclement weather. Now the kids stay home, uh, six weeks later and the parent or the teachers have to come back in with no students in the class. They're not being heard, it's something as simple as that, which has been mentioned, I'd say at the last three board member, uh, excuse me, the last, uh, three board meetings. The administration just seems, or the administrators seem like they're steadfast. If it doesn't sound like they're being heard, then obviously they're going to leave when they have an opportunity. And lastly, there's another board member that has, uh, recently been arrested for harassing somebody. He's still on the board. He harassed somebody that was an employee at the school and he's still there. We talk about policy, well, why is he still there? Maybe it's time to change it. They don't change that policy, how can teachers feel comfortable to teach?
Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Garby, we're gonna start the next round of questioning with you. I'll give you heads up and then we'll move back and then back to you, uh, Mr. Butler. We have had, in school board forums the last couple that we've had, um, student safety was an overwhelming issue of concern. And, um, I'd like to ask you this question. How would you rate our school system's effort to address this issue? And what are your thoughts about anything more that could be done?
I think Onslow County has done a great job with, uh, school safety. Recently, within the last few years, we've increased our SROs, not just in the high school and the middle school, but also into the elementary schools. Uh, and that's twofold. Not only does it provide extra security, but in this day's climate towards police officers, it gives students, uh, a positive interaction with police officers throughout the course of the day. And we have our officer-friendly programs, our DARE programs. We've increased security as far as locks on the doors, um, cameras in the school systems. So I think we're moving in the right direction. The only thing I would like to see is I think our elementary schools maybe share SROs and I'd like to see the, uh, in the future, maybe a permanent SRO for each elementary school as well.
Okay, uh, Mr. Lanier?
I can only sit here and, uh, agree with Ms. Garby because I know these things to be true. That being said, I would really like to touch on the last question. Teacher satisfaction is kind of 50-50 proposition. And when you look at Onslow County, it's more like a 75-25 proposition. The loudest, the loudest, um, or squeaky squeal is the one that expects to get degrees. But the bottom line is when we, um, can increase, um, pay, which is a DPI issue, when we're talking about, um, the rules that we have to follow, which is a legislative issue, again, we come down to law, policy and process. Each person here has got to do more study and find out how these mechanisms work in order to understand this.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I apologize that I, I remember that you did, and, uh, hold that up, hold your card up earlier in the last round, but, uh, so I allowed that. But, uh, Mr., Mr.
Yes. I think I, I think our SROs are phenomenal. I think they do a phenomenal job at the schools. What I love the most is that they're at all the events. You can't go to a sporting event, either inside the gym, on the field or on the track. The SROs are there and they're interacting with not just the students, but the parents and the rest of the community that's there. So I love that. It kind of paints a hard target. If you see the SRO there in uniform, it kind of deters a little bit for somebody that might question doing something. I think our doors at the schools are great. I have to hold my ID, it shows the camera, they're in the office, then they buzz me in. What concerns me is our trailers. I can get in the trailer, I always say it, the big bad wolf can hop and pop and blow the door down. I can't get into school unless I show my ID, it's pictures taken, it's recorded, who were you here to see? I tell them, then I'm buzzed in. But if I just go on the side of the building, then I have six or seven modular trailers that I can just push on the door and it opens. Um, I think we need to increase cameras around the school as well.
Okay, Mr. Rogers?
Well, uh, I guess I'll touch on, a little bit more on this later, but obviously there's a lot of curriculum or, um, at least ideological curriculum that has encouraged, uh, children to have a lack of respect for authority. And the reason why I say that is because it doesn't take watching a deputy, one of our deputies that woke up in the morning about to risk his life, willing to risk his life for us, get punched in the face by a student multiple times before he takes that student down. There needs to be a clear defined, um, uh, policy. I hate saying the word policy all the time, but if the officer, if the deputy is getting punched in the face, he's like, hey, do you want me to take him down or not? As he's getting hit. That's not, that's not the way. That's not, that's not the way it should be. We need to work more with our, with our sheriff's department, or excuse me, our sheriff's office, so that they can have a clearly defined role in our schools and not rely, or at least think that they're relying on school staff when they should either intervene or not.
Todd?
Can you repeat that question, please?
I'm sorry, I have not repeated the question as much this time because I know we're going to be short on time and I'm trying to keep it moving.
No, I understand.
So, yeah, but it's fair, it's a fair point. How would you rate our school system's effort to address the issue of school safety and what are your thoughts about anything more that could be done?
Safety is such a broad word when you're talking about kids in school. Are you talking about the computers and their access online? I know that's been brought up several times and the school board says that they're working on that, and I think that they just implemented something when we attended the last school board meeting. Are you talking about the bullying? Then, I'm not sure how that they are approaching all of it and keeping their eyes in there. I think we need to have more involvement in the schools with the parents, whether it's they're just coming in and volunteering for 30 minutes at lunchtime or what have you. I agree with having cameras in the classrooms, because I think that would hold students and teachers accountable, to whether they're being disciplined properly, because I've been told that's not, that's a problem too. On my last statement to curriculum, as I keep coming back to, are they being safe in that avenue? I'm not assured of that either.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
So, I think part of our, our society's greatest downfall is we quit holding people accountable and discipline them. They can commit whatever offense it is and we sort of slap them on the wrist and let them go, at best sometimes slap them on the wrist. I believe part of our issue is that we need to actually discipline and hold people accountable. And I'm not just talking about students, I'm talking about all of society, but it certainly applies to our schools. Yes, I'd love to see more SROs, I'd love to see every school have a designated SRO. I do understand it's a funding and staffing issue, but what I'd really like to see is that we teach our children through working with first responders, include the sheriff's office and local city police, we actually work with them and run programs that would teach them to respect and appreciate and value those first responders.
Ms. LeBlanc?
I agree with the ideology that safety is more than just physical safety. There's the, what's being taught in the curriculum, there is the physical part of it. I think that discipline is really key. There was a news story recently about a school district that was really struggling with the safety issues and, and some of it being the respect. And what the school system did was they brought in a lot of males from the community. I believe in leadership, my example, and so I feel like our students are invested when they're seeing that pattern for them. And so, I, I just feel like that that's something that, that we need to look at. Last thing I want to say is, I'm from a small town in Chardin, in 2010, there was a school shooting and three students died. We always said it'll never happen here, and we just always need to be getting ahead of that. Not saying it will happen here, but we always need to be getting ahead of the potential of what could happen.
Thank you. And Mr. Butler?
Sure wish I had more than one minute. Cameras.
You do have a rebuttal.
Cameras, okay. Our, our schools got cameras, but at a lot of the schools, the cameras don't work, not all of them. A lot of them don't work and some of them, they have blind spots. I think cameras should be allowed, or shoot packs should be installed. In the past, it was a bit awful cumbersome, I know, but it would also be deterrent for kids acting up in there. Access, the doors now have card access, which is good, however, when you go from one building to the next building, the bell, when the bell rings, the doors are unlocked where the students go in and out without having to worry about dinging the bell. And if a student wanted to do an active shooter, he could just wait for the bell and then we'll go in that door. Also, the, we have fired, not fire drills, yeah, we have fire drills and we have tornado drills, but we don't have any active shooter drills. We have, I think, like two a year, but not with the students actually there. They ought to have, because it's disrupting the instructional time. So, it's hard to do those properly. But now, when was the last time a student was killed in a, in a fire? It's been a long time, but active shooters, we've had some. We need to have more drills, active shooter drills in our schools and actually scheduled. We need to get more, the elementary schools to want dare in their school. A lot don't want dare because it takes up instructional time and they're jealous of their time, I understand that. But dare is important. We have some dare instructors, we don't have many anymore because nobody wants dare in their, in their classrooms. And dare is extremely important, we need to get that back into our schools. Our schools, schools were not built for security, but the newer ones are, and that's a good thing. The new schools are being built for more security. Thank you. Well, I want more, but.
It's supposed to be last year. Okay, anybody else, would anybody else like to add or provide a rebuttal?
Can I have no rebuttal? No? The second one?
There's no reason, reason, rule that you cannot, that's right.
I know we're going to fight about this one, but cell phones in the schools. Students have cell phones. More than one time, as a supervisor, I had to go to a school that had a, an issue and they had to lock the school down. Couldn't get there. Parents lined up the roads because kids are texting, "Come get me, mom, I'm scared, I'm scared, come get me." Couldn't get there. If an emergency vehicle had to get in there, it'd be almost impossible to get in there. These cell phones need to be locked up and put away or whatever during instructional time. They shouldn't be allowed to get them out and start texting people, "Hey, come get me." That is a safety issue, it's going to be a hard one to beat.
Okay.
All right, you force my hand.
Uh, Mr. Rogers, I, yep, you still have one more.
Yeah. Well, it didn't take much. I'm not a school board member yet, but I've made a couple of calls in the process of my candidacy, and there's two programs that cost almost a fraction of what we've already spent called Bark and Family Link. It's very simple, they have a program that's made for schools, it caters solely to schools, but here's the difference. Not only does the school monitor it, but so do the parents at the same time. Why are we not monitoring our kids' computers with the school? Not only that, but our kids, the monitoring is, it comes later. We want to see it real time. Every other program does that except for ours.
Okay. We're going to go over an hour, but I'm going to ask one more question anyway, then we'll have our summations. And I will start this with Mr. Williams and we'll work our way the other way. The recent fire that destroyed a building at Hunter's Creek served as a reminder, a reminder that portable classrooms are still being used to meet the needs of our student population. What is your assessment of the school system's current building needs and the funding being provided?
I think it's wise that we came up with a funding program that, you know, the Board of Education, the Board of Commissioners work with to fund the schools, but we're still using trailers. And some of those trailers have been there for decades, I think in some cases. Trailers were never designed to be a long-term solution, they were never designed to be publicly inhabited by students each and every day. And as Potvin brought up, Sean brought up, you know, those trailers are not secure, there's no way, shape or form. And I do not understand why we continue to put trailers there and use them, but we're about to renovate part of a building that was destroyed. Thankfully, we were wise enough to save part of a building before we tore it down so that another, another school can use it. At some point in time, we got to, to look ahead. We also have a deferred maintenance cost in, like Dixon Elementary is $9 million of deferred maintenance. But I guarantee you, we'll put a trailer there if we have to.
Ms. Todd?
Thank you. It's my understanding that they're going to have to build a new, because we're growing 260 students a year, we're going to have to build a new elementary school every two years. I don't know whether we need to put a committee or a different group together so that they're focusing on our growing needs, so that we can build new schools, so we can be ahead of the game a little bit, and at the same time be alleviating the modulators, so that we can incorporate that space either going up or building out, however they decide to do that. I believe that it's cheaper to build up, but I keep hearing we can't do that, so I'm not exactly sure what the background is on that. But I just feel like we have to start focusing on what we can do two years prior, instead of waiting till the last minute and saying, okay, we don't have enough room, so we'll stick a trailer here. Thank you.
Mr. Rogers?
So, I have a deep appreciation for a couple of weeks ago attending the school board and commissioner meeting. In that meeting, I did find out that it costs roughly $1 million to repair the windows in just one school. With that being said, and that's all I'm going to say about that, because I don't know what it costs to repair a window, however, in that same statement, our skill center, the second floor of our skill center is still not completed. This is going back to your last question, what has COVID taught us? That skill jobs have prospered way more than any college job. Working with your hands, welding, drafting, HVAC, which we have, that has prospered, and we're over here talking about repairing buildings at astronomical calculations, meaning we haven't asked for it yet, but this is what we're thinking. And our skill center is not even completed yet. All the opportunity that we have there, and we're talking about this. So, I think, yeah, that's, that's one of the biggest things that I'm a little, a little upset about.
Mr. Potvin?
I'd like to open up by quoting the Long Range Needs Facility Assessment Document. Right here, it says, "Prolonged or overuse of these facilities is not desirable." So, I moved here 2013, my children were in the modular trailers. If I ask one of you to borrow your vehicle because mine's in the shop, and I tell you, it's just temporary, but if I'm still driving it 10 years later, it's no longer temporary. So I think that the notion that these modular trailers are temporary, they're not. Security is an issue, and our schools, everything is designed around the core capacity, the cafeteria, lunchroom, and the media room. So, if we add more modular trailers around the schools, the core capacity doesn't grow, but yet what happens is, now a student in third grade is having lunch at 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning, because we have to have the allotted lunchtimes throughout the day. I could go on and on about these trailers, that is my, my main focus that I want to make a change on, but we just have to get rid of them and we have to build. We have to rebuild schools and we need to build up.
Mr. Lanier?
The last time I had run, the bottom line is this, just about everything that you think you might need inside a school system already exists inside Onslow County, saw a district. It's how you navigate the system, how you access the system, and the things that you know, which will provide you the information and the understanding that the majority of these questions are addressed on a daily basis. This is no secret. There's total transparency. I would suggest that anyone on this panel, take some time out and go have a nice, long conversation with the superintendent. He will get you, any of his executive staff, to point out the nuances of all these things. Running a school system is not easy.
Mr. Garvey?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Talking about, talking about the recent fire at Hunter's Creek, it sort of was a reminder that portable classrooms still in use. What is your assessment of the school system's current building needs and the funding that's being provided?
About a month ago, the Board of Education and the county commissioners met and they discussed the capital outlay funding to go towards our schools. Onslow County is growing, there's no doubt about it. They work, Onslow County works with Educational Research Group out of NC State, they try to predict our growth. It's not an exact science. We know the students are going to be moving into the county, we don't know where they're going to be moving into county. So it's, it's, you know, we try to do the best we can to decide where to build a new school. There's a lot of tremendous transfer within the county from, from school to school. So, mobile units, although not ideal, they are necessary because they serve an immediate need to address overpopulation of a, of a school at one time. So it's one of those situations where we just have to, again, look at the research, where students are going to be coming into, and try to pick the area that we need to build new schools the best we can.
Okay, Mr. Butler?
I know there are a lot of projected building needs coming up. I was always wondering, why didn't we just, the school's already there, the property's already there, instead of going out and buying more property, why can't we add a wing? They did that at a school I went to up in Greensboro, they added a wing with 10 more classrooms in that one wing. That would have been 10 trailers gone. The good part about that is security can be factored in. You already have the, the media center, you already have the cafeteria. I know it's an issue about lunches, but during COVID, what would they do when they're taking their lunches to the classroom? They go pick up their lunch, went to the classroom and they ate. It worked out just fine if they had to do that. I'm looking at the, all the different schools we have, I'll look at the different ones that are, that are overfull and some that are underfull. Nobody likes to do redistricting, but that might be an issue also, it has to be addressed all the time unfortunately. But if, if we could build a wing on our school, I would think we'd be able to get rid of some of those trailers.
Okay, and Ms. LeBlanc?
So, obviously, I believe as residents of Onslow County, we know that we are growing exponentially. There are people moving to our area all the time, and so I feel like it's really important for us to get ahead of whatever is coming. One of the things that was mentioned was people moving in. We know that Marsoc is sending an entire unit of Marines and their families from California. That's going to impact greatly, probably the Dixon school, school system. And so, it is about, it is about getting ahead of it, it is about using the best resources that we can, it is about looking at what we have, how can we use what we have, and how can we make it better? I am a firm believer in this. If we fail to plan, we plan to fail. And so, we just need to have a strategic, long-range plan in place that will address any changing demographics that we may have here in Onslow County.
Okay. You know, I have a ballot.
Yep.
Okay, rebuttal.
Real quick.
No further comments.
I do want to just say that Onslow County and the Board of Commissioners, they do a real good job with the long term, because our, they have a long term, a 10-year, long-term construction plan in place, where they're looking at projected student growth in Onslow County. And so, we do look to the future.
Ms. Lanier, I believe technically you're out of rebuttal.
Yeah, I am.
How about if I let you start the closing statements?
That would work.
See, I'll, I'll do that. I want to thank you guys for, this has been a very, it was a very full panel, obviously, very robust discussion. I got to about half of my questions, there's so many topics that we didn't get to, but I'll, and I want to thank LaShae for keeping up with this timing, which is, you know, it can be a little complicated because you guys go quickly. But thanks a lot, and we will start this round, and I will move to your left, and, and we'll go with the closing statements. One minute, please.
Primarily being a member of Onslow County's Board of Education requires that you not only have a basic knowledge and insight of administrative process, but that you are willing to listen to all of the responsible resources that you have available that help you to make an appropriate decision in real time. The thing about real time is that we don't know what's going to happen from minute to minute. Last, we dealt with COVID. Our board decided to give total authority to the superintendent for the specific purpose that he be flexible enough to deal with the moving standards in real time. All other factors are not going to disappear, and it's important that the public constantly be involved at the school level to ensure that they can make things happen.
Thank you. Mr. Potvin?
I'll say I think that no board that's solely responsible for hiring and firing one individual, being the superintendent, we should put on him saying, hey, you run this. Because if you're too good, we'll keep you, if you don't, we'll fire you. But we, as a board, need to do what's best for our children. I care. I really, truly, genuinely care, because I've said it time and time again, the students in school right now, as we sit here, it's spring break, but the students in school are going to be the ones in 10, 15, 20, 30 years, sitting in this room, asking the questions, sitting on this board. We have to give them the absolute best that we, as a community, can give them. I walked away from one profession so I could spend more time in the school system, working with the children. It's what I love, is I have a genuine passion for it, and I said earlier, just because my time in the service is over, doesn't mean my time serving has come to an end. So, I've served our nation for 22 years, now I'm going to serve our community through the school system for however long the community will keep me here.
So, we talked about transparency, let me tell you what, we just approved a Onslow County School Board last week. The director of College and Career Rating is Dr. Michael Elder, very good guy. He has a doctoral degree and dissertation named "Leveling the Playing Field: Achieving Proportional Representation for Students with Diverse Backgrounds." First of all, leveling the playing field, that's not happening. No, it's not. I can't be an astronaut right now. That, that playing field's just not going to happen for me. Second of all, this is for the AIG program, this is the intellectually gifted students, we just allocated- We just allocated $1.4 million to that last week. This was approved last week in the school board meeting. And the, just to let you guys know, they have a multi-modality system. If I'm a clinical therapist, this is the reason why. Because as a school board member, I'll catch this. The multi-modality is the Odyssey of the Mind program. Children as young as three to four correct ID, correctly ID themselves as the authority on a matter of fact about the physical world, even in the face of contradicting statements from adults. That just came through last week. And we're talking about we got rid of CRT. It's just starting.
Thank you, Mr. Todd.
So I think at the end of the day, we're all trying to accomplish the same thing and that's to take care of our kids. There's a lot to be learned and, but there's a lot we have to share. So whichever three of us actually gets elected in November has to work with the other four. And hopefully, we can find a way to work together using our strengths and our weaknesses and bring us all up so that we can work together to ensure the safety of our children because at the end of the day, that's our, that's our biggest goal. And then as, in, in doing that, we're setting our community up for the next 10 or 20 years with working together to do that instead of pointing fingers and telling who did what at the end of the day. So I'm Angie Todd, I'm running for Onslow County Board of Education.
Mr. Williams?
I'm Bradley Williams. I run in for Onslow County Board of Education. I've been consistently the same person, whether at a forum or a medium or out in town or at my church since I announced in November. And that is not going to change. I feel beholden to God and I feel beholden to the Constitution and that's where I'm going to stand. No matter what comes at us, if it's morally wrong or constitutionally wrong, I'm not voting for it. End.
Got to have this time.
You always ask that.
I do.
So I just want to thank everyone for being here today and, and for giving us a chance to share our passion. Political candidates do a lot of talking. We do a lot of talking. We share our passion, our views on issues and our passion for change. We need to talk less and we need to listen more. As a member of the Onslow County Board of Education, I will be committed to listening to every stakeholder of our public schools, the students, the parents, the teachers, the staff, and the administration in order to find workable solutions to the concerns and issues. And we'll provide an environment that will empower the students of Onslow County schools to live into their goals and their dreams. Thank you.
Mr. Butler?
I told some of my friends that I had run in for the Board of Education. They said, why are you doing that? Why don't you go like commissioner or something like that? That's more important. I said, are you kidding me? What's more important than our most natural resource, our children? What could be more important? The foundation of our civilization where we live. We need to make sure we got people in the, on the school board that have the moral courage and are not scared to say no when the time comes. They said, well, you're only one voice. I said, that's right. It might be that one vote that stops something horrific from happening. Or it might be that one person that sees something that's wrong and it brings it to everybody else's light. You don't know. But we need to have people on this board that are going to make that difference we want to see in our community. And I plan to be that one.
And finally, Mr. Garvey?
I've been connected to Onslow County schools for well over 30 years. As a student, a teacher, and a principal, I'm still connected to Onslow County schools. My wife, my son, they graduated here in Onslow County as well. My son, my daughter-in-law are currently teachers here in Onslow County. One day, my grandchildren are going to go to school here as well. I bring the perspective of a parent, a teacher, and a principal to the board when I make decisions. This is my home. I'm vested in the welfare of Onslow County schools and I look forward to serving again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, candidates.
Yes, I want to thank your candidates for joining us today. 100% participation and your willingness to serve our community and our children. And I want to give a thank you to the City of Jacksonville for the use of these facilities and their media services. And thank you again to our forum sponsor, Duke Energy. Now, if you missed any part of the forum Onslow, just check the listings for, on G10 for the rebroadcast dates and time. Or you can also find these forums on YouTube. Remember, your vote has power. Absentee ballot request forums are available online